Yeah. Thank you.
I'd like to call to order the city council meeting at seven oh five. We'll have a pledge of allegiance by Tricia Whitfield and Jeremy Hartley, the senior pastor of the Tulare First Baptist Church will give our invocation.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before I pray, I just really want to say thank you for all that you guys are doing for the city of Tulare. My wife and I are brand new Tulareans. We've been here since August of last year, so we're about to celebrate our first anniversary. About a month ago, I became the senior pastor of the church right across the street, Tulare First Baptist Church, and I'm very happy to be here. And as a pastor, it's my desire for our church and for our flock to serve this city and serve this community. So if there's anything that we can do to bless the community, please let us know. We're here to lend a hand.
Thank you.
Father, thank you so much for the wonderful city of Tulare. Lord, I do pray that you would be with our mayor, our council members, the staff, and all the leaders represented in this room. What I know as a fellow leader, they have to take all of the information tonight and make decisions. Sometimes those are not easy. It's unpopular. Sometimes they could be hard. So, Lord, I just pray that you would give this wonderful team clarity tonight. Give them unity. I pray that they would all be tugging from the same rope. Lord, thank you for this community where I can raise my family in, and I pray that you would bless it. God, repay these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome to Tulare. Okay, it's time for public comment. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda may address the city council at this time. State law prevents council from acting on any matter not on the agenda. However, your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. This is also the time for the public to comment on items listed under the consent calendar or to request an item from the consent from the consent calendar be pulled for discussion purposes. Comments related to public hearing and general business items will be heard at the time those items are discussed. In fairness to all who wish to speak, public comment is limited to a total of fifteen minutes with each speaker allowed three minutes unless otherwise extended by council. For those that wish to provide public comment while not physically in attendance, you may call five five nine three six six one eight four nine during public comment and/or public hearing and general business items. Please note that there will be approximately a twenty second delay in broadcast for viewers. When calling in, mute the device used for viewing the meeting. Please begin your comments by stating your name and providing your city of residence. Please note that I already said that. Okay, so I have one card for public comment, Michaela Gomez.
Good evening. Michaela Gomez, resident of Tulare. I was wanting to talk about an incident that recently occurred, and I wanted to bring it to the council's attention. I've also recently submitted a citizen's request form to speak with the police department about it further as well. This incident occurred on Monday, July eighth, twenty twenty-four, around ten thirty PM involving my thirteen year old sister. Earlier this year, she had been diagnosed with manic depression, and with that, she experiences intrusive suicidal thoughts. And on this day, she was experiencing these thoughts, and she did contact nine one one, and they did send officers to our house. When Officer Mercedes and her partner, whose name I unfortunately did not retrieve, arrived, my mother spoke with them first, and then they asked to speak to my sister. And I was listening to the conversation, and as the conversation went on, I did grow a little frustrated with Officer Mercedes's responses as they seemed somewhat dismissive to what my little sister was saying. For example, when Officer Mercedes asked my sister her age, and my sister responded with thirteen years old, she responded, Officer Mercedes responded along the lines of, well, you're thirteen years old. What you're experiencing couldn't be that bad. And I found it just very inappropriate to someone who is experiencing a mental health episode. And with that stems questions about mental health training for officers and if there are any recurring trainings throughout their career.
Thank you very much.
Does she have a contact?
Oh, did you? Would you please leave your contact information, and then we'll we'll be sure and have someone contact you. Chief? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else in chambers who wishes to give public comment? And I think we have Donette on the phone. Donette?
Yes.
Okay, you may proceed.
Disconnect me. Are you ready now?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Sayer and members of council. This is Donette Silva Carter with the Tulare Chamber of Commerce. And I just wanted to bring an update on some items. First of all, the leadership Tulare program is currently recruiting for the next class, which will be the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five class. We have one additional information meeting being held next Tuesday evening. The applications are available online at tularechamber.org. We'd like to invite everyone to join us. One of our chamber members, major investors Eagle Mountain Casino, is hosting a mega networking mixer with five, excuse me, seven chambers of commerce within Tulare and Kern County. That'll be at Eagle Mountain this Thursday evening from six to eight PM with food and entertainment. A great opportunity to network, not just with our own area, but outside our region to make those connections to grow and sustain business. We also want to let everyone know we are partnering with Small Business Development Center to do a new business startup series. And we're going to do another series that will deal with business advancement for those already in business. Both of these are going to be a prelude to the actual launch of the Tulare Business and Innovation Zone. So we're really excited about the T-Biz opening up in late fall, and we'll have these as a lead into that opening. The information and scheduling can be found on our website. We want to note too that with our partnership with the SBDC, we currently would like to be recruiting additional business consultants as we anticipate the need for our startup businesses that will be part of T-Biz. So anyone who's interested can please feel free to contact me at the chamber. Also, we will be doing an open information meeting in late August for individuals who have an interest. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak, wishing you a good meeting, and I will be watching from afar tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have any communications this evening?
No communications.
Thank you. Then we'll go to council reports and items of interest. Councilman Harold?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The only thing I had was I attended the downtown association meeting and discussed some issues with them. They get to go and see the brand new truck that has arrived at the fire station. Other than that, that's about all I've done.
That's great. Thank you. Council Vice Mayor?
I missed the presentation of our brand new shiny truck. I hear she's real purty, though.
She is.
And I did reach out to the chief, of course, and would love to come down to the station and get to see it and maybe ride around town and honk the horn a few times. One thing I think I'll present here, just because compared to number nine, which is a bit more formal. I did mention to our city manager, and what I would like to do is submit a request to present on youth commission. That is not a new topic. It's been around, and I'm surely not the first council member to present that. It's come up before. But put together a PowerPoint of information that we'd like to share with this council and have a discussion amongst peers. Kind of have some information about that. So I didn't get the form turned in for tonight, but we'll work to get that turned in for the next meeting. And it's been interesting doing some research about our kind of fellow communities out there that have a youth commission, how it's structured, what it does, its purpose and goals. So look forward to talking hopefully in the future about that.
Thank you. That I highly applaud that. I was able to go see the new truck. It was only a hundred and fourteen degrees the day that we went out there to view it, but it was beautiful. I met with constituents who are concerned about the resources for the homeless in Tulare. Went to Kiwanis Firework Extravaganza on the third, which was only a hundred and thirteen that day, but that was a really wonderful show. The GAC meeting on seven, eight, and then I went to Ser optimism fundraiser on the twelfth. Went to the fire station last night. I got invited to dinner to see what good cooks they are. And that was really, really a very nice time to visit with our firefighters. And then today we had lunch with Congressman Valadeo at the chamber, and I was very impressed with his bipartisanship. I was very much impressed with that as his presentation. So that's my report.
Thank you, Mayor. On the third, I also attended the fireworks extravaganza and Kiwanis Club should be applauded. And those that work tirelessly on that program, it's a it's a true asset to the city of Tulare. On the ninth, I had a mid Kewee GSA meeting that I attended and represented the city of Tulare. On the tenth, I attended a LAFCO Commission meeting in Visalia. And today I also attended the chamber. I attended the chamber roundtable in with Congressman Valadeo. And afterwards went over and met him along with Councilman Segala at the fire station and listened to Chief Ott's presentation, which was very well received, I believe, and we got a good view of this new ladder truck that we we all participated in, and it's quite impressive. And then we were fortunate enough afterwards to sit all six of us that were there and spend time discussing a variety of issues. I'd say about half an hour, forty-five minutes, one-on-one with the congressman, which we talked about needs for the city of Tulare and what what can be done to work together to help us, basically, is what it amounts to in his capacity as a representative. Also, as an item of interest, I was I'd been out of town, and I was very happy to see when I got back that the the all way, I call it a four-way, but I guess the correct vernacular is always stop at Merritt and M Street, which seems to be working pretty well. I I haven't seen any accidents there. Everything seems to be going fine, and the public seems to be adjusting to what I believe from a safety standpoint was truly needed. Do you have anything to add on that, Tricia?
No, I think it turned out really well. We're keeping an eye on it. I'm going through it as many times a day as I can just to see how traffic's flowing. So we'll make any adjustments as needed, and then PD's been helping us out with a little bit of extra patrol over there. Just to remind people to slow down, pay attention that, you know, we put in the always stop. So we do have the message boards up this week and next week. I may bring them back the week that school starts, just as another reminder. I don't want to keep them out that full time because people will stop paying attention. So we may bring them back the week or two of school starts, just to remind people again to slow down. So that was our goal, was to get it done before school started, get people used to that flow of traffic. So when school starts, they're prepared.
Thank you.
Mr. Segala?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council. So I also did enjoy the fireworks show from my brother's front yard and barbecue and everything and pool. So it was a nice experience, but thank you. I know that's driving home. Oh, probably about twenty-five.
Yeah, that's the money we didn't get. Yeah, that's okay.
Well, hey, I'll tell you this, we just make it up at the corner article in terms of taxes that we paid for items. But no, it's a great event. I mean, a lot of folks enjoyed it. I mean, you drive down Bardsley, and everybody seemed to have a good time, and that was great. I also did got a chance, I guess twice, see our new fire trucks. I want to thank the chief for the tour he gave myself and the mayor when we went out there, and it was pretty hot. And then just today again, as Councilor Madero said, I didn't get a chance to go to the lunch for the chamber, but I think we had some great quality time with the congressman. We did talk a little bit about the needs at the fire department, and the chief talked about and grants and a number of things. And I think we had a very genuine conversation about the homelessness and his efforts to help us in Washington. And so it was a great experience, and I appreciate the opportunity to do so. So thank you, Chief Ott, for the invitation, and that's pretty much my report.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Over here.
Oh.
One thing that I've had to admit, I think we all should acknowledge the effort the fire department and the police department put out on the Fourth of July. And I don't know if code was out there, too. I would imagine they probably were involved in this. Number of citations issued, then hopefully a lot of money would be coming into the city because of that. Some areas, I think, experienced an increase in activity and others experienced a decrease, but I think it's a it's a gain and a positive gain for us. And it's due to our our people's efforts to enforce this on illegal fireworks.
Yes, thank you.
If I saw that right, in the email, three ten thousand dollar fines, so you're pushed for ten thousand, but three of those, my goodness. But yeah, I did. I had felt actually, at least in my area and region, it was less. It was a less of an of an impact, but that ten thousand dollar ticket. Good, good enforcement, but I concur, Steve. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right.
I think the key is issuing the ticket for ten thousand dollars and collecting the ticket for ten thousand dollars are two different things.
Okay. I've missed my water bill before, and I've seen how the city comes after me. I'd hate to see the city change.
Okay, if there are any other comments, gentlemen? If not, we'll move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted in one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that then item may be removed and considered separately. So do I have a motion? Anyone want to pull anything? See, I knew nobody was pulling anything.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Bye.
All right, pass is five to zero. Then we will move on to. That was really quick.
Public hearing.
Yeah, we'll move on to the public hearing. Comments related to public hearing items are limited to three minutes per speaker for a maximum of thirty minutes per item unless otherwise extended by council. For those that wish to provide public comment while viewing the meeting online, you may call five five nine three six six one eight four nine. Please note that there will be approximately a twenty second delay in broadcast for viewers when calling and mute the device used for viewing the meeting. All right, so we'll start with seven point one. Michael, you're going to do the presentation?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you very much, members of council. Each year, city councils required to set landscape maintenance assessments for the upcoming fiscal year. On June eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, council adopted resolution of attention number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-two, which set tonight's date as the public hearing date to adopt landscape maintenance assessments for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. And you directed the city engineer to file the required engineer's report with the city clerk. A copy of the engineer's report was included with tonight's staff transmittal. The public hearing is intended to allow property owners within within each of the twenty-eight landscape districts to comment on the proposed fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five assessments for their district. The proposed assessments compare to the prior fiscal year as follows. Seven of the districts are proposed to decrease. Ten of the districts are proposed to increase. Eight of the districts would experience no change from the prior year. Two districts are being assessed for the first time, and one district has not yet completed any improvements requiring maintenance and therefore does not have any proposed assessments. For the ten districts that would experience an increase in their assessment, none of the proposed assessments exceed the rate approved by property owners at the time of the district formation, accounting for CPI adjustments where they are allowed. Therefore, with regard to Proposition two eighteen requirements, they do not constitute an assessment increase that would trigger the need for property owners' approval by ballot. Following the public hearing, to receive testimony regarding the proposed landscape maintenance assessments for the coming fiscal year, staff recommends adoption of the resolution confirming the diagrams and landscape maintenance assessments and levying assessments for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, and also granting council authorization for the city manager to execute a certificate of compliance certification and hold harmless statement in connection thereto. So I'll be happy to answer any questions after the public hearing.
I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone in council that wishes to speak to this issue? Seeing none, I will close public hearing. Council, do you have any questions or?
Michael, I noticed that several of these did not have any districts, did not have any anything that allowed for CPI adjustments, and I was just kind of curious. I discussed this with Mark this afternoon. I'm curious as to what the history is that 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 was allowed, and are steps being taken to not allow that in the future? Because the result of that is continuing to have reduced services on an ongoing basis. And then the public becomes or those living in that area become frustrated because they're not getting what they used to get. And how do we deal with that?
That's correct. Essentially, the districts prior that were formed prior to two thousand and five did not include the CPI adjustment with the exception of Sunrise Estates, which there was a restructuring of that assessment district to include the park improvements. Remember what how many years ago that was, but at that point, they did include the CPI adjustment for that assessment district. Going forward, ever since the one since two thousand and five, we have included the CPI adjustment. And all new districts, we are sure to include it also. At some point, it's going to become an issue where we can no longer maintain the level of services required or that the people are used to in the landscape maintenance districts. And at that point, we'll have to put out ballots for each district and ask people to improve approve increased rates. And at that time, we'll also include the provisions for CPI adjustments so we don't get into the same bind.
So it would be more a timing issue, finding when maybe something else is going on the ballot, the best way to present it to to the public in those areas? Or could we even have a city? You're shaking those. Could we have a citywide election that relates to anything, any district that has has been formed that doesn't have a CPI?
I would have to defer to the attorney, but what Michael's talking about is a ballot within that geographic area, the subdivision in which that lighting landscape district applies. lighting landscape district applies. I'm not aware that we would do a citywide ballot.
Couldn't we have a citywide provision that would satisfy two eighteen? That basically said all of these districts that that don't have a CPI, Consumer Price Index increase are henceforth going to have them, something along that line?
I wouldn't think you could do that only because the CPI is typically based on the engineer's report for that specific area. So you'd have to kind of carve out the areas first and then do the engineers, the studies. And then and that's typically how they're done is the studies will build the CPI increases in for that particular area.
I think the other challenge would be imagine you have a subdivision where the voters in that subdivision adamantly don't want a CPI adjustment. But all of a sudden, the voters at large everywhere else in the city said, yeah, we want those guys to have to pay an increased CPI or whatever. So I I think my experience just dictated would need to be local. Each of those would be local. Now, the thing that we are going to be bringing to you.
If I can interject, I mean, that sounds like, you know, that's unfair to them, except for the fact if the general fund has to pick up that deficiency, then the then the rest of the public do have an interest in seeing to it that that's taken care of.
Or the alternative is a lower level of service.
And that's typically what happens is if if there are areas that the residents don't pass the increases or any particular increase, that's not met with, the city could certainly choose to do that, but typically that's not what happens. What happens is the service gets cut back from once every two weeks to once every three weeks or once every four weeks, something like that.
And the other thing, counsel, that we do intend to bring to you in the future, I don't know exactly when, it'll be sometime this calendar year is you know, we we will bring forward probably a consultant that will talk to council about the possibility of the city moving forward with more of a CFD community facilities district approach rather than just an L and L district going forward and other developments in the future. And that's a little bit more of a more modern, a little more comprehensive approach that will allow us to look at other issues that impact neighborhoods beyond just, let's say, lighting and landscaping. So we we hope to bring that forward in the future. And if we do that, that would also include a CPI type adjustment approach.
Any other questions or comments? All right, then we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution confirming diagram and landscape maintenance assessments and levying assessments for fiscal year twenty twenty-five and authorize the city manager to execute a compliance certificate certification and hold harmless statement in connection thereto as per the recommended action by the staff report.
Is there any second? All those in favor?
Bye.
Any opposed? Pass is five to zero. We'll move on to seven point two, Cottonwood subdivision. Mr. Sop.
Well, he's coming up. This I I own some property on Tahoe Avenue that's substantially less than five hundred feet away from the boundary of this subdivision. And as a result, you know, it could affect values, could affect rent. I have a I think what's labeled as a significant financial interest or a presumption of that. So I will recuse myself and depart.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor. My property is within, what, between five hundred and a thousand?
Probably less than less than a thousand.
Less than a thousand feet from this project. And it could have an impact on my property. So therefore I will be refusing myself.
Okay, thank you. I don't own any property.
Good evening, Mayor Sarah.
Stephen, if you would wait one second. Mario.
Okay, that Stephen can go.
Oh, okay.
Counsel, so we the two issues that were identified, there are still some particular questions about how those properties might be affected. And so one option that we'll discuss tonight is potentially getting some letters, some advice letters from the FPPC in the case of Councilman Harold and Councilman Maderos. And so that's just an option that will happen later. This item does need, it needs to be unanimous because now there's only three of you and it's required for an ordinance and a resolution to be unanimous. And so if it's not, it is a public hearing, the procedures have already been gone through. And so if we're not going to have that, our request would be to continue the public hearing to a date certain, maybe a month out, so we don't have to renotice everything and see what the FPPC says. Maybe they say something different, maybe maybe not. But that would be essentially my request at the end of the night if it's not passed by council. If it is passed by council, there's not really an issue.
Okay, so am I hearing you say we want to postpone the whole thing or we're?
No, you can, council can proceed.
Go ahead, okay.
And if it.
Just be mindful that if it looks like the vote may not be unanimous, you may have a request from the applicant for this item to be continued.
Okay. All right, Mr. Sop.
Just to clarify, so is that because the FPPC may rule differently on either one of the recusals?
Yeah, so there's, I would say both for for I don't want to speak for them, but in the conversations that I've had with them, there's some questions about whether they actually have to refuse themselves based on there's a there's a pretty intensive four part test that you have to go through. I think out of an abundance of caution, they don't want to do anything that's, you know, going to derail the project or or get in the way of that because of because of them. But I think that, I mean, it's going to take some time to get a letter from the FPPC if that's what they want to do. And neither one of them asked me to do that yet, but that is an option later. So I think they're playing it safe. They may decide they don't want me to send the letter on behalf of either one of them. So that's, I think. Was that clear where we're at, Councilman Scola?
Yes, thank you.
Vice Mayor. All right, now, Mr. Sop.
Good evening, Mayor Sarah, remaining members of council. This is a request by NFDI LLC for a zone amendment to facilitate development and to subdivide an approximately thirteen point three one acre site and to establish an eighty-six lot single family residential subdivision. The subject parcel is within the city limit boundary. And the project would be located southeast of the Mooney Boulevard and Foster Drive Ultimate Alignments. The existing general plan land use designation for the site is low density residential within the city's adopted general plan. And the subject property is currently zoned R one six, which is a six thousand square foot minimum lot area zone. The applicant is requesting to change the existing zoning to an R one five, which is a single family five thousand square foot minimum lot area zone. The proposed R one five zoning designation is consistent with the existing low density general plan designation for the site. The request again would be is being provided in order to facilitate the development of an eighty-six lot single family residential subdivision. The development standards of the R one five zoning designation would apply to the tentative subdivision map. Access to the proposed development would be established through an interior through interior access from Asser Street through the existing subdivision to the south. The proposed development would be required to provide connections to city water and sewer systems, stormwater collection would be provided to the subdivision and directed to a new temporary basin to be located to the north of the proposed development. Stormwater would eventually be directed to a regional basin to be located to the northeast at a regional basin that has been started, but would be carried there when future development allows for improvements to be made that are necessary to take that stormwater there. Park space, streets, curb, gutter, sidewalk, block walls, landscaping would all be provided. An initial study was prepared for the subject consistent with the California California Environmental Quality Act. The initial study resulted in a mitigated negative declaration and represented that the project would not result in potentially significant impacts to the environment with incorporation of the mitigation measures. Those mitigation measures have been included as conditions of approval for the project. Two comment letters were received during public review period for the SEQA document. Comment letters were received from the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District. And another one was from a gentleman named Brent Grizzle, who was a property owner adjacent to the west of the subject property. The comments and response to those comments have been provided within your agenda materials. The comments did not result in the need to recirculate the SEQA document. Staff would note that the project area was previously part of the Cottonwood Estates tentative subdivision map that was approved by the City of Tullary Planning Commission in October of two thousand and three. The Cottonwood Estates subdivision was proposed to establish be established in four phases. The first two phases have been fully constructed. And the area that was to be the final phase is now under the ownership of the Tullary City School District and has been identified as a potential future school site. This project area is would have been phase three of that previous approval. The Cottonwood Estates tentative subdivision map is now considered expired. And the map and previous conditions of approval are no longer valid. So the applicant has is applying for a new entitlement with new conditions of approval for the project area. With the expiration of the map, any prior conditions of approval are no longer valid. On June twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, the planning commission voted four zero with one vacancy to approve the Cottonwood three tentative subdivision map and to recommend to the city council approval of zone amendment number seven fifty-two. So in conclusion, staff is recommending that the city council approve zone amendment seven fifty-two and adopt the initial study mitigating mitigated negative declaration that was prepared for the project. That concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
I will open public comment. Is there anyone in the chambers that wishes to make comments on this particular proposal? Darlene.
Seeing none, I came right up. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for the time and thanks Stephen for his staff report. As he stated, this is just the zone change proportion of this project. And I wouldn't have anything additional to add. I think you might have some questions for me later. I would like to mention, though, that the school district is planning to do some development on the site to the just to the east and they're putting in some ball fields and I believe some parking area. And they have reached out to us and as part of this project, we'll be assisting them with doing their half of the street Foster Drive in order to get people to those ball fields and recreational areas. With that, I'm here to answer any questions that you might have of us as the developer and leave it at that.
Hey, is there anyone else in chamber that wishes to address it? If not, I'll close public hearing and entertain any questions from council.
Stephen, if you could go back up to the the slide that has the lots kind of like divided that one. I did have an opportunity, the developer reached out to me and opportunity to talk about the development and some of the issues with traffic and so forth. And then I had the opportunity to speak with with our city manager as well. And so I'm looking at, you know, my iPad in terms of actual satellite satellite map of of that area. And I mean, if one thing that that sticks out is such an odd law, I mean, it's such an odd type of, you know, you know, land there. Then I'm glad that someone's being creative that they would develop some homes there. But I think what what I, the questions I had were I know there's been some talk about realigning Foster and Mooney at some point in the future. There's been there's been the conversations that that's been going on for some time and that certain things are supposed to trigger it. You know, like we did with the Oakmore, right, where staff determined that there was the the street signal wasn't warranted. I guess that's the word that was used. And so I think that from my understanding, the one of the comments from the public was asking that question about whether the Foster Mooney would be realigned. Is that correct?
That is accurate.
And then from my understanding, it's similar situation where at this point, it's not warranted from what the traffic study that this particular development has done is not warranted to get there yet. Is that?
Yes.
Okay. And I think the questions I had that I talked to to our city manager about was trying to get an idea of what the realignment would look like. I know it's in in the package. There's a zone amendment seven fifty-two slide, which shows a little bit more what that alignment would look like. I don't think you guys have it up there.
Melissa has an exhibit she's going to pull up.
Yeah, and that gave me a better idea of how that was going to be laid out because oh, okay, there you go. And I appreciate the staff putting that together. So right now, obviously, it doesn't look like that. And from what I understand, as Ms. Mata brought up, there is going to be a development and I believe is it where the end is? Is that where the school district is looking to build some kind of, I don't think it's a school per se, but it's more like ball fields or?
A portion of it, yes. Kind of more to the southeast of that. They're currently talking about possibly building ball fields. The remainder of the site, again, has been identified as a potential future school site as need for that site drives development, but we do not know the timing of the full site being.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a big question. I've gone to a couple of school board members, you know, obviously I know a school board member and I know that their student population is declining, so it's not growing. So it's not like, hey, we're growing by thousands of kids is actually declining. So you know, I know that in my district, there's also a possibility of building a school, but I just can't see unless we're going to start building schools with two hundred kids in them, you know, that 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 may be difficult. But I guess my big concern is that alignment and I understand that there may be in the future a bigger annexation that would come to council to consider that may trigger that. But I guess the question I have is, again, what what would trigger that alignment? And then what options are there to get it done? Is it something that a developer would do? Is it something the city would do or what? How would that come about if that were to be required?
I think that the city, correct me if I'm wrong, Mark and Michael. I think the city views this improvement as needing to move forward as a likely city project in the future. I think the engineering division has even been directed to speak with consulting firm and starting to work on design work for the improvements and whether or not a signal or a roundabout or whatever the improvement should most likely what what's most appropriate to be constructed there. I spoke with our senior engineer today and he indicated that they'd already had some preliminary conversations with Peter Engineer Peters Engineering and that they would be working on thirty percent design work and that they were also looking into other grant opportunities to to try to fund the improvements. Ultimately, my understanding also is that this intersection is within our development impact fee program. And so the as development impact fees are are paid and collected, that that money could be used to fund the improvements that will be necessary at this intersection in the future. We do see this area as a growth area in the city. You alluded to the possibility of future annexations. I think that is very possible and likely in the future. And that those that growth area is likely to drive the need and trigger future traffic studies and and improvements that will be needed and will necessitate the realignment and the improvements to go in at this intersection. All of those developments will also be required to pay development impact fees and those could be used for the installation of the improvements.
And I guess the the final thought, sorry, the questions may come up. I understand that the obviously the school district is considering doing something, right? They may be planning and they got to go through a process, but my understanding is that they're exempt from any traffic studies that would be required to be done. Is that is that correct?
Actually, they would still be subject to SEQA. And as part of that analysis, they they would be required to do environmental studies of which traffic impacts could be considered.
Could be, and I mean, could be or?
It would be the city's position that we would ask for those studies, yes.
Okay, because I think that was one of the big questions. Say, for example, I I would imagine ball fields would be a lot quicker to put together than a school. And just knowing from the need that there's out there that, you know, there could be a lot of traffic that could be generated. And right now, from what I can tell, there's nothing that exists. And I do appreciate the the note from having developer that they were willing to build out the street. Is that is that correct, Ms. Mata, that that would be one of the things that you guys would be open to doing? And and when I say build out the And, and when I say build out the street, I mean, building out both sides, not just your half.
The school district has been in communication with us and we have been agreeable to that with some reimbursement for their.
They were to just give you the money and build it out all that.
Right.
Okay.
So I, what the extent of that is, I'm, I'm not exactly sure. I know there need, will need to be a cul-de-sac that is, because that street doesn't go through, Foster doesn't go through all the way to, um, where's it Turner? Foster doesn't go all the way through to Mooney or that intersection. So there will need to be a, a cul-de-sac of some sort of temporary turnaround for fire and whatnot. But we'll be continuing those, those discussions um, upon this approval.
Okay, great. Thank you. So those are some of the questions that I, I had on the project, but thank you.
Vice Mayor, do you have any questions?
No, um, as a Memphis staff and I think much of what Councilman Segala has already talked about, that traffic management, the improvements have been a hot topic with council. The developer walked through that, city staff walked through that. I know we, you know, have some residents here that was part of development project with traffic review. Would this project to be responsible for? We're talking about partnerships. And I think for myself, which is um, uh, it's an, an, an exciting time for growth, but we want these items taken care of prudently and we wanna be good stewards towards planning. But there's, there's more projects to come. And we're gonna see, you know, more annexations and more development. And, and that's a good thing because we're gonna see a lot of these improvements that are surely in discussions will come to fruition. But for what we have here, I have no further questions, cause we've touched on a lot of topics and um, look forward to what the future brings out in Southeast Tullary.
Okay, this proposal is for a zone change. Do I have um, a motion?
Before, before we do the vote and the motion, just one quick question. Um, you know, I think for me, I'm always a, a big supporter and of parks in developments, especially when we can build more parks and have it maintained. So can you share a little bit? I see, I do see uh, there is some space allotted for park. Can you kinda share what, what that looks like?
Sure.
One block, a little mini block? What, what, what does that park look like?
So there's this uh, a, a park that's being provided there on the corner of the, and kinda in the center of the development. The, that park will not fully meet the applicant's Quimby Act fee requirements. There will be additional fees required. Our current ordinance allows for developers to meet Quimby Act parks requirements through uh, combination of dedication of land and the payment of in lieu fees. Uh, so the applicant has proposed some park space, but again, it would not fully meet their requirements and additional fees would be required.
So it looks like it might be like two or three lots, it's a little pocket park.
I think it's point, point three nine acres, I believe is the size of it.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. Any more discussion, then I guess we're ready for a motion.
Then, Madam Mayor, then would like to do is I'd like to move that we uh, pass to print an ordinance approving Zone Amendment Number seven fifty, seven five-two to change the existing zoning designation from R one six uh, to R one five. And adopt the resolution to adopt the initial study mitigated negative declaration prepared by uh, for the Cottonwood Three tentative subdivision map and zone amendment number seven fifty-two.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes three to zero unanimously. Okay, we can invite our other council people back. Welcome back.
Thank you.
That passed unanimously.
That's.
Three to zero. All right, we'll move on now to general business. Comments related to general business items are limited to three minutes per speaker for a maximum of thirty minutes per item, unless otherwise extended by councilor. For those that wish to provide public comment while viewing the, the meeting online, you may call five five nine three six six one eight four nine. Please note that there will be approximately a twenty second delay in broadcast for viewers when calling in. Muted device used for viewing the meeting. Uh, Mario?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Counsel, we're gonna be talking uh, briefly about the Supreme Court decision and Grants Pass um, that we've been kinda waiting for. Thank you. Uh, so Grants Pass, we kinda have to start with Martin versus Boise, which is a case that you guys are all familiar with. Um, but uh, the Boise case essentially held that um, the cruel and unusual punishments clause stopped uh, cities from criminalizing homelessness. And the way they described that was um, if there were not enough um, low barrier shelter beds for um, homeless individuals to voluntarily go to, then uh, within that particular jurisdiction, then you, you couldn't criminalize um, them sleeping in parks, for example. Because essentially the reasoning was there was nowhere else for them to go. And so um, if that resulted in, in some, in cruel and unusual punishment under the United States Constitution. So that was what um, Martin held. Uh, and again, essentially just, you know, you couldn't violate them for trespassing, anything like that. If you didn't have an equivalent number of shelter beds for people to utilize. Um, so the issue in Grants Pass are these two specific questions. So do public anti-camping ordinances violate the Eighth Amendment prohibition against cruel and unusual punishment? And do anti-camping ordinances criminalize the status of being homeless? Those were the two major issues in the case. Uh, and so the facts of this particular case, there's a, a community called Grants Pass, Oregon. Um, it held in its municipal code, a system for um, basically people's prohibiting pro- uh, people from sleeping in the public facilities. Uh, it began with a uh, citation. Uh, if you were found to be camping, and then if on this uh, subsequent time you were found to be camping, you could actually get banned from that facility, from that park, from that location. Uh, and then um, on the third, ultimately you would end up in a criminal trespass situation where you may spend some time in jail or you could be arrested. There was also the uh, uh, fine that could be imposed. Um, but that wasn't really a major component of the case. Um, so again, so only first time offenders. And it was really the uh, subsequent things that were happening, including the arrest or prosecution for criminal trespass, which became an issue. Um, just as a note, Grants Pass did have a charity-run homeless shelter. Um, it was not considered low barrier under Boise because they had rules on what you had to do to uh, be eligible to attend and, and stay in the, in the shelter. Uh, so a class action was brought on behalf of the homeless people living in Grants Pass. Um, essentially us along the same line of Boise, the scheme in Grants Pass violated Boise. Uh, based on that, the district court entered what's known as the Martin injunction. Uh, and basically said that Grants Pass could not enforce uh, the ordinance against the homeless individuals. The Ninth Circuit upheld the Martin injunction because they, of course, authored the Martin decision. Um, and it kinda fell in line with, with their reasoning. And then Grants Pass filed a petition to the Supreme Court. So the holding from the Supreme Court is uh, essentially that the enforcement of generally applicable laws relating to camping does not constitute cruel and unusual punishment prohibited by the Eighth Amendment. So what that generally means is that as long as you're not um, targeting homeless individuals um, with the ordinance, that there's no real issue with the Eighth Amendment. Uh, and that basically means that Martin versus Boise is, is void at this point. Um, there were two cases that kinda come into play that were um, previous to Martin, but on a related issue. Robinson versus California and Powell versus Texas. And um, this was the major argument from um, the opposition, basically saying that Robinson versus California says that you can't um, you, you can't have laws that target a status of a person. Um, and so both in Robinson and in Powell, you had a situation where there were people who were um, had substance abuse problems. And um, the, the court in Grants Pass didn't make a distinction between Robinson uh, and Powell in that they're saying you can do that. What they're saying is that Robinson and Powell don't have anything to do with this case. Or not saying, the, the Supreme Court is not saying that um, you can be punished simply for the fact that you do not own a home, that you cannot sleep in, in public. Um, what they're saying is um, that is, that is separate and apart from the status of actually sleeping in a, a public facility. So the fact that you are homeless um, really doesn't come into play, just like in Robinson and in Powell. The fact that you're uh, maybe have a disability of, of being an alcoholic, doesn't mean you can also be drunk in public. Those are, those are two different things. So what shakes out of that is that um, the cruel and unusual punishments clause really didn't impact uh, the Grants Pass ordinances. Um, it was not focused on uh, the, the ordinances, ordinances themselves were not focused on the status of an individual being homeless. They were focused on uh, what can result from um, having somebody having to sleep in the park. Regardless of, they may have to do that because they're homeless. It, it doesn't speak to the cruel and unusual punishments clause, does not speak to uh, what states can criminalize. Um, and it did not say that uh, the punishments in Grants, in Grants Pass uh, qualified as cruel and unusual. So what that also means is that um, in, in this particular case, they did not. But if you can just kind of extend that and say, well, yeah, if Grants Pass set on the third try, uh, your third citation, that you would have to spend five years in jail, that probably would violate the cruel and unusual punishments clause. That's not what we're talking about here. But what the court is saying is, in this particular situation, their scheme does, does not. Um, and there's other parts of the constitution that still have to be complied with. What we're dealing with here is strictly the Eighth Amendment uh, component of that. And so as long as they, the ordinances are generally applicable to everybody, uh, they can be applied without violating uh, the Eighth Amendment. So the implications of all of this, um, you know, what does this actually mean to us? So Martin versus Boise doesn't really have any practical effect at this point. Um, the idea of shelter beds and not being able to um, prohibit camping on public places or facilities uh, does, no longer applies. You're gonna see many cities in the Ninth Circuit start to pass anti-camping ordinances. Um, you know, essentially the ones in Grants Pass have been rubber stamped at this point. So um, something along that line where it gets progressive, there's a, maybe there's a fine, then a prohibition. Then at that point, uh, a criminal trespass, as long as the uh, resulting that criminal sentence is not excessive, it's gonna be fine. Um, the Supreme Court was very careful to note that it doesn't prevent the, each individual state from coming in and creating legislation that uh, prevents cities from criminalizing camping in some way or criminalizing the punishments. So um, just because of Grants Pass, ordinances don't violate the cruel and unusual punishments clause, doesn't, has nothing to do with whether the state can come in and pass legislation like they do on many other issues and say, well, maybe the maximum um, punishment for sleeping in a public place is a day in jail. Maybe they say the most you can say is, is thirty days in jail. Maybe they say you can't criminalize it at all. There's a whole broad range of um, options for the states. And, and Supreme Court was very clear that they're saying, we're not saying anything about that. They're more than welcome to do that because it, none of that violates the Eighth Amendment. So um, it, it, it creates some options for the state. Um, I don't know what they will do. And, and again, if you're gonna see some jurisdictions that take it out of hand, maybe the state comes in and says, hey, you've, you know, certain cities have gone too far, so we're gonna put some limits on that. Um, but you saw a wide variety of people in this case, asking for the rule in Martin versus Boise to be changed. The city of Los Angeles, city of San Francisco, um, the, the governor, there were all kinds of cities. They were all asking for some kind of change. So um, certainly possible that the state comes in and, and puts some restrictions or some guidelines on there. They haven't done it yet, but certainly possible for them to do that and perfectly legal for them to do that. Um, and then the last implication is that cities can have homeless shelters with rules and restrictions without hurting their bed count because the bed cap doesn't exist anymore. So what does this actually mean to Tullary? Well, our current camping ordinance, we have a, a very limited um, ordinance on where you can camp. Um, but it's certainly legal at this point. Um, so there, the first thing is there's not really any required action that the city must take uh, from this ruling. Um, the, the ordinance is fine. There's nothing that needs to be uh, adjusted unless the council chooses to. Um, the current ordinance does prohibit camping, camping in particular parks based on sensitive uses. We went through that. Um, and the, the council has decided that those are the, those are the particular parks that are sensitive. We, we don't allow um, well, camping in. Um, but it doesn't address all parks. It doesn't address public buildings or public property such as sidewalks. So in that scenario, all of those places would be um, would be legal to prohibit camping um, on, on, on all those places.
When you say legal, you say legal here, you don't mean legal for the homeless to do. You mean legal for us as a council to prohibit.
Correct. So if we wanted to go, um, because the current ordinance only prohibits camping in particular parks, if the council wanted to extend that to public buildings, sidewalks, other facilities, uh, it would be more than welcome, welcome to do that. Um, especially in a, in a scheme that's similar to Grants Pass. We don't have that. We just, in our parking, or I'm sorry, our camping ordinance, it's just a prohibition. Um, and there are, are some non-specific penalties and none of them are criminal. Uh, but if we wanted to do that, that's an option as long as it was in line with, with Grants Pass. Um, and then of course, the last bullet point there is, we, we still have to comply with other constitutional standards. So again, uh, we don't want, you know, a violation results in you being banned from the city. Okay, there are other constitutional uh, amendments that deal with that, why we can't do that. Uh, we wouldn't want to, uh, you know, on the third try, it'd be life in prison, right? We can't do those types of things. So whatever the scheme we come up with, there are still other amendments that we, in the other parts of the constitution and the state constitution that we have to comply with. But um, so if, if, I just wanna kinda have people understand that there, this, this doesn't mean there are no limits to what we can impose now. There are still significant limits. Uh, but essentially the same kinda scheme in Grants Pass, if the council finds that useful, uh, we could certainly do something like that. I think the only other thing I would add is that uh, you know, this is, this is not the solution to homelessness. Um, there's not, as far as we can tell, I mean, I've been up here with you guys during the same meetings. There's not one solution, right? It's a component. Um, and it's a tool. And if you wanna use the tool, it's available for you to use that, just like the shelter is, just like, you know, teaming up with the county, other programs, things like that. So um, that's your, that's your legal update. I'm happy to answer any questions.
It's open for public comment. Is there anyone in the chambers that wishes to comment to this particular proposal? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. I'll take comments and questions from council. Vice Mayor?
Um, so in, in kind of a layman nutshell of what, what you just walked through, one of the things that where you're talking about that if it's still sensitive, there's sensitivity around targeting. So if you pass laws that are targeting a population. So if our rule as a community is no camping, it's community-wide, the same rule applies to everybody. So if I was in, in the same drunk, or if I stumbled in a park and I slept, that's still a violation or camping, just as it would apply regardless if you're homeless, our ordinance isn't targeting that. It's only a violation for you if you're homeless. Um, and that the part to be cautious about still, and, and just to put summary is, cautious that your ordinance, your actions aren't targeting a certain class or group of people. And that the other part that is still a caution, especially in California, let's say, is an all encompassing. So if you were just trying to ban homelessness out of the city of Tullary, you're, you're, that's not gonna be prudent uh, either with other civil rights or of course with the state. So right now, where we have tried to, um, I think be reasonable and to mitigate uh, our actions with parks, we're trying. We're trying to mitigate and work through enforcements of our sidewalks and our pathways and community thing that. We, as you said, there's no required course of action. We don't have to go back and change any rules. And that even in some elements where we've done some pieces, we'll implement it and other pieces we hadn't, we could come back and revisit that. Again, just cautious towards the overdays for which you said.
Yes, all all of that is correct.
In a nutshell, what the Supreme Court's saying, if I'm correct, is that uh you can prohibit conduct, but not status.
Yes.
Okay, so the status of being homeless, the status of being a drug addict, you can't prohibit that. Even though I think there was one dissenting opinion by Justice Thomas that thought that Robinson should be revisited. Hopefully he's just one, but um. So bottom line, we're looking at conduct, not status. The other thing is theoretically, based on what you indicated, the state of California or any other state could decide to reinstate Martin V Boise. And that would become, based on what they said, that would become the law of that state, not necessarily the land. That would be a law of that state. But but you indicated that there were some briefs filed by the state of California and other states against uh Martin V Boise.
Yeah, it was the the briefs that were filed were really um I would say for the most part, one-sided. Uh by everybody that Martin essentially was not workable. It was just it, you know, we had four or five years since that had been um approved and it just. Everybody was kinda saying this is a not a workable solution to base. Whether we can uh prohibit certain conduct based on shelter beds, the the number of shelter beds. Um so certainly that was, everybody was kind of in agreeance with that, and and I think. That kinda showed some alignment, but I know that obviously our state is very diverse in a lot of different ways and um. If certain jurisdictions start going too far in the eyes of the legislature, I can assure you that they're gonna correct it back by. Adopting some legislation saying, hey, you know, you if you're gonna do this, you can only here here are your limits. Uh and that's certainly allowed, it seems like.
But if we continue to take the steps we are with uh permanent supportive housing with the with the what we're going to build now. Um and we start having, we we pass an order ordinance that's much more restrictive than what we've had before. Especially along the lines of uh you know, like this library, the dog park, other parks where kids are at, that type of thing. But we have reasonable alternatives. We're gonna stay within the grants pass case.
Yes, certainly.
And sidewalks, uh other pla- you know, we've already dealt with the medians at major intersections, the panhandling in those areas. That's not status, that's conduct. And as long as we use that as the fundamental principle on any ordinance that we're seeking to pass, which is conduct, not status. We're safe.
Yeah, and I think that's the case for any uh any kind of sub-issue. Uh not dealing with homeless, right? We we pass some ordinances that deal with homeless and um. Because that's what that's what we have seen is generally the homeless have been sleeping in the parks, for example. But the panhandling traditionally, we we didn't, the council didn't view that as a homeless issue, right? It's it's. I don't think we had any inclination that those people were homeless at all. Um you know, certainly that does happen, but. The issue that the council was trying to address there was, I don't think was related to homeless.
It's safety.
Yeah, and I and I think so as as council makes this decision, if wants to do anything, is really. With the mindset on that conduct, what are we what are we trying to address? Well, we're trying to address not sleeping in the park by anybody. Not blocking the sidewalk by anybody, regardless of whether you're homeless, whether you have the biggest town in house, it doesn't matter. That's. You know, it's the conduct that we're trying to to adjust.
So I I think you've uh I I wanted to kind of follow up on on your comment, your one word uh Councilman Madero's principles. When this came out, you know, obviously I was very interested and thank you for the presentation about the impact. I you know, today when we met with the Congressman Valadell. We talked about homelessness and and I I I I was very sincere when I shared with the congressman that I felt that the city of Tulare. Was one of the leaders in Tulare County in regards to addressing homelessness. Um doesn't mean that others weren't doing it, but I think we have put together a good model, as as Councilman Madero said in the meeting. A model that has uh put together the partnerships required, nonprofits, private sector. Uh local, state, federal governments have all come together, and I think we've been we've been noted for doing some good work. Um obviously, it took a while to get there. I remember when I was mayor, one of the first things I did as mayor, I held a meeting here. We had a four hundred, three hundred some people show up. When we talked about homelessness, right? And uh there was a lot, a range of what we do with them. Folks wanted to be as compassionate as possible. And other people said, just put them in jail and throw away the keys. So we had a whole, you know, you know, a spectrum of of how to handle that. And I think for me, it's 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 I I've noted that, I've seen it. I I I noted that folks are frustrated with the. Conduct of folks that are experiencing homelessness, the lack of accountability, the lack of responsibility. But I also know that that the approach that we've been having is compassionate. You know, we've been waiting, working with folks to try to get them to the situation where we get them off the streets eventually. There's a lot of challenges in that. I mean, there's a lot of mental health issues, a lot of drugs and alcohol issues. And for me, I think one of the things that I wanted to to bring up tonight to see what the council felt, we have moved forward in addressing homelessness. There have been studies. I do remember that one uh study that was done through to uh through the county itself. I think it was like eighty-page document that. Talked about the reasons, you know, divorce was one of the biggest reasons why a lot of people are homeless, but there's a lot of different other things. But I I think the one thing that I haven't seen, and I know that the mayor's been a lot more intimately involved in 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 addressing homeless as well as other council members. But I think for me at this point, you know, I would be uh open or I would be hopeful that maybe. As stated, we don't necessarily have to change anything required in terms of ordinances at this point, but I I would be uh. I would put out there that maybe as part of our future discussions that we develop. Um what I'm calling, you know, addressing homeless guiding principles. You know, something that is gonna sort of drive what we do in the future. I mean, for example, the biggest thing for me, I never ever believe. That being down on your luck and being homeless should be treated as a crime, right? Because you're homeless or gonna put you in jail. I mean, because you did something like anyone else would do, then we'll put you in jail. So I think some of the principles that I that I wanted to do is to make sure that we address that homelessness is not a crime. That our goal is to protect, you know, private property, uh you know, that we have compassionate enforcement. When we talk about targeting, I do think that there is a fine line, and I don't see that here in our city, but in other places where. The idea of uh if if, for example, a city says you can't sleep in a park, period. You know, maybe someone that's not homeless is is having, you know, a long day and decides to go sit under a tree in the park. All of a sudden, they fall asleep. If an officer comes by, is that gonna be like discretionary? Hey, you don't, you look like a guy suit and tie. Maybe you just came here to hang out and you fell asleep, so we're gonna let you pass, but someone that may not look like that or the person there. Here's a ticket. Boom, you're sleeping in the park. You're not supposed to do that. So I think kind of that fine line of trying to figure that out i- is something that, you know, I think could happen. Um as we move forward, but I I think just addressing the issue, I I think I know I. You guys have heard me in the past talk about the idea of trying to um. Not add to the difficulty homeless folks face. I mean, if if well. J-walking is no longer illegal, but a couple of years ago it was, right? But if you got a ticket for j-walking, then all of a sudden that twenty-five-dollar ticket, I don't know what it was, becomes. You know, a a warrant because you didn't have the twenty-five dollars to pay for it or this or that. So I think that's another thing is that I just want us to be careful because I think we have sincerely, I sincerely believe that the city of Tulare has developed. The reputation of being a leader on homelessness. And I just wanna make sure we do all we can to 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 follow under these principles of of holding people accountable. But yet being compassionate to try to help people, so that. You know, I I I'm sorry if I'm rambling on, but I think for me, it's been a little mixed discussion or or sense of how to take the Supreme Court decision. Cause you wanna help people, but at the same time, you don't want them doing what we had downtown a couple of years ago, right? People sleeping and doing their business in the little business wells and all that. We wanna continue to discourage that, but. Same time, I just don't wanna go down the road where homelessness is a crime.
Yeah, I I would agree that uh in my um association with the county. I'm on the homeless task force for um representing Tulare. I have been for several years. We did do a a pro- a proposal. It was called a pathway home. Uh that happened just before the pandemic, so it was it's been on a shelf since then. Uh the last three months, we have pulled that back out. And as a as a task force, we're looking at those five areas of homelessness that can be addressed to assist um. Those experiencing homeless to have a pathway home. So that is that is happening. I I would suggest we adopt that. We did adopt that at one point uh before the pandemic as our um our guiding principles as we address the issue within our city. So if um I can provide everyone again with that document, we can look at that perhaps as a guideline. Moving forward, it's a a lot of research. We participated in it quite heavily. And uh and I I too believe that Tulare has done an outstanding job of of moving forward continuously. And addressing the issue of our neighbors who are experiencing homelessness. And that's not just my opinion, but that's throughout the county. And there are many organizations that that uh look to us as an example of what can be done in addressing uh this issue. I I personally don't think we need to change a lot based upon this information. Um I think the information is not really um that conclusive on what we can do. I think we'll get more information as the governor and our legislators at the state. Uh look at the ramifications of of what we do uh with this this particular Supreme Court decision. Um I think as we move forward as judiciously as we can to uh build our homeless shelter. It's definitely gonna make some changes in what's required from by us uh because of of this ordinance. Um it might be advantageous to us because of some of the things that we might be able to adjust and change a bit. Tweak, but um at this point in time, I I would not recommend making any changes at this point in time. We have an amazing um park and rec department and code enforcement and uh public safety that works in the encampment. Working really diligently with uh as in partnership with the county to address the issues that are very complex. And multi-layered and deal with humanity. And code enforcement does their best to go out every day and rouse up people that are sleeping in the sidewalks and behind buildings and asking them to move on. Um once we have the shelter, I don't know exactly what this ordinance will do as far as us. Um I think we can remand people that they either go there or they they do leave Tulare, which is what we said before. Um we'll have adequate beds to accommodate them. And working with other organizations within our community like Salt and Light, like uh self-help, like um. Madison and uh what's the other one called? On West Yours. The name. The one on West. Santa Fe Trails, I can't remember that. Where, you know, we're putting people in homes. Since we opened the encampment a year ago, February, we have housed ninety individuals. Into permanent housing. Now that is pretty darn good. And we are housing more as it becomes available. A lot of it has to do with um vouchers. And assistance to get them rental assistance as they go into into facilities, but I I agree with um. With Councilman Sagala, we we have worked really, really hard, this entire community. Um and many organizations and council has been part of that, and the staff has certainly been part of that, so. I don't know, tonight, we're not gonna make any recommendations. We're not voting on anything. We're just.
Listening.
Listening, right?
We are, although I wanna provide some comments when council.
Okay, so that's my two cents.
I I ask for clarification. I would like to follow up on what you two have indicated. Um I believe and and then give Mr. Harold a chance to or the other two, but uh I do believe we ought to continue, stay the course.
Absolutely.
Do believe that what is being done at the pat- pathway home, is that what?
It's called.
Pulled off uh my attitude is let that work its course. The idea of this council adopting principles that we're going to follow, to be quite frank with you, I'm I'm not being critical. I don't think it's necessary. I think what we're doing is an indication.
That's the same thing.
Accomplishes. I don't know if uh Mr. Zamora would agree with me, but I think when you start adopting principles for us to follow. Anyone out there who wishes to challenge what we're doing and the way we're doing it. Will look at what we adopted and and point blank say, well, you're not doing what you said you you would do. You you're not doing this, you're not doing that. And suddenly we boxed our, we boxed ourselves into a corner unnecessarily. We don't necessarily have to do that. Let's just do what we're doing without uh putting ourselves in a situation to where.
And and what we're doing is, yeah, what we're doing is in total um alignment with pathway home. So it has five five areas and we're working on all five of those. So that, we did adopt pathway home at one point, this council did. Uh so maybe we wanna take a look at it again in lieu of what you've you've just brought up.
The only thing I would say is the fact, I think it's real simple. The fact that other cities and locations are looking at what we have done here and are continuing to do indicates that we are on the right path. And we should continue that direction.
The uh. I I I can't sometimes speak as eloquent as as Dennis does. I don't want to seem as a debate. The the only part which if the consensus, cause some. I think getting the presentation tonight and some strong elements of just continue the path and I think of staff. That we leave room that with this decision and as there's some settling that happens and some. Our staff and our departments synthesize where the city's at in the aggregate, that we leave room. That staff might come back from the parks and say, hey, our recommendation is. We're this area or we see this, you know, key acute issue. Uh now that we have the court cases, could council perhaps address this? So I think just being, you know, of of also uh that testimony of just being reasonable that we we're we're open. To as this gets settled, then we're open to staff suggestions and others that present themselves. I agree with that.
Yeah, and I think you said it. I think you said it. I wrote it down. Reasonable 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 mitigation. And I think that's what I've heard come from all of us. So um our city manager, you wanted to.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh just a few comments. Uh thank you uh City Attorney for the presentation and. You know, I just wanna remind council sort of where we're at and what's coming forward in the future with regards to how we're handling homelessness. Uh on August sixth. We will have HHSA, that's the county's department that deals with uh services for our citizens. They've done an amazing job, as far as I'm concerned, in terms of looking at all the different disparate parts and pieces. Uh that are related to homelessness. What would that be? Facilities, nonprofit organizations, programs, funding streams. They're gonna come and we're gonna have a two-hour work session on the sixth. And they're gonna sort of share with us the lessons they've learned, everything that's happening, you know, countywide related to homelessness. And then they're gonna walk us through if a if an individual comes into the shelter, sort of what happens, what are the paths that they can follow? Because remember, it's a shelter. It's not intended for everyone to stay there for the rest of their lives, although there may be some individuals that stayed there for quite a period of time. They're gonna talk about depending on the the nature of those individuals and their capacities and challenges, what opportunities might they have in terms of where they might go. They also share some uh some information with us about potential funding that they're working on to help us to augment our operational cost with the shelter. As you know, the shelter's out to bid right now, and we're intending to bring back the council on September seventeenth, those bids. Uh for construction, as you know, portions of the shelter are already under construction and then the balance of the site and the main building would be coming back to you with the bids. Um we also are working with the potential operator on a term sheet. Our intentions are to bring that back to you the same night on September seventeen. So you'll not only understand what the cost of constructing the shelter will be, but what the cost will be in terms of operating the shelter. And I think some of the things council's looking for in terms of the guideline discussion, I think you'll see some of that when we bring back the operator term sheet because. There has to be sort of a philosophy behind the things that we will do or we'll expect of the operator and their performance. Uh and so some of those concepts, I think you'll see captured. For example, we'll identify some whereas is, whereas the city of Tulare believes. And we'll we'll put some of that in there, so it's very clear whoever, you know, posterity in the future. Uh the operator in case, you know, somewhere they get off track or there's a misunderstanding, we can kind of revert back to and look at the contract and say, hey, these. hey, these are the things we said we were going to do and why we're doing it that way. You'll also see in that term sheet that we're proposing a short-term contract of, of several years, three years or so, with the intent that it gives everyone the opportunity after we're in it for a few years to kind of step back and go, okay, what's working, what's not? What changes have occurred? You know, whether it's federal changes or state changes, do we need to reevaluate things? Are they happy? Are we happy? Do we want to go back out and seek proposals in the future? So I think we're going to build into it as council has described, you know, some opportunities for change where we think it makes sense and then opportunities to sort of continue to move forward in the direction that council has placed, you know, has charged staff with. And so I'm very pleased with this Supreme Court decision. I think it, you know, there's some folks that are going to say, oh, it eliminated Boise, so we don't have to do anything anymore. And I think we all know that's not the case. Homelessness is not going to go away because the Supreme Court made a decision. But it does give us good direction and information, how to make sure what we're doing is compliant with the law and we are protected and we're protecting the citizens in terms of potential legal challenges and liability. So we're going to continue to move down that path. We may come forward in the future with potential ordinance revision, but, uh, you'll know about that well in advance if we do so. And if it would, and if we were to do that, it would be to make sure that we're further in compliance with this Supreme Court decision. So thank you to the City Attorney, thank you council for your direction and support, and we're going to continue to move forward.
One comment, um, Melissa and, uh, Mark, if you, you mentioned September seventeen. Please try to keep that meeting as small as possible because several of us right after that meeting are going to be driving down to Long Beach for the Cal Cities Conference. And if we go, if we go late.
Am I wrong?
The annual conference is actually in October this year.
Oh, it's in October, not September?
It's in October.
So we promise to keep it shorter than a month. We'll keep the conversation.
I thought it was September.
Yeah, I didn't have it on my calendar, so I was looking, is it?
Okay, you better send me an email, because I got it all screwed up here.
Yeah. Any other comments from any council members concerning this, uh, Supreme Court decision? Okay. Then, uh, we will move on to future agenda items.
How many times have we done this? Is this it?
No, I still got a balance, I think.
Um, but is this it? We'll get it all done now, is that what?
No, I, I'm going to have a balance after this. But, uh, Madam Mayor, Council, what I have before you is a request to, uh, agendize ARPA funds. I did put it in a generality because I wanted to run the requests by both Josh and Mark to see if there was any concerns. But what I'd like to do specifically on this is request the council's support to add three, uh, ARPA disbursements. Two of them will go to, one of them will go to the, uh, Tulare City School District in the amount of five thousand dollars to us, uh, to work on a project we're doing for, uh, school supplies and some backpacks uh, program that, uh, I've talked to, uh, the new superintendent and the school board member there that we will partner in providing some support to, to, to needy students. The second one would go to, uh, the Tulare Joint Union High School District in the amount of five thousand dollars for their Tulare Western Pre-Medical Academy Program, which encourages students to enter the, uh, medical field and support them, uh, with some scholarships. And then the final one would be, uh, ten thousand dollar, uh, uh, disbursement to ACED, which is an organization a lot of us are familiar with, uh, who year in and year out provide, uh, scholarships to needy students across, uh, our city. And that would be again for scholarship programs. So in all, total in all would be a twenty thousand dollar, uh, ARPA request. So that would be the specific things I'd like to request to, to be on the agenda for consideration at the next council meeting.
Is there any possibility that you could put it on based on this agenda request to do all of it? So we could finally have all our?
Well, I think, I think what I'm going to be waiting for, and I think I, I did have a, a, well, a conversation briefly with Josh and then yesterday with our city manager. Um, as you all well know, my intention to have, having, uh, set aside, uh, a, a good amount of ARPA funds was the issue of a community garden. Right? To perhaps establish a community garden. I know that there's been discussion, Councilman Harrow's been talking about that. We talked about it and I think for me, what was surprising, pleasantly surprising was that in our multi-year uh, uh, master plan that we put together and through the, the, the department with Jason, community gardens were in top three. Right? Were one of the top three things that the community wanted to see us, you know, kind of pursue. Uh, the top two, well, Dog Park was there, so we're already addressing that. And then there was Zoomall Park, I think handled other types of things that were disclosed in the study. So, um, I'm hoping that as we move forward in discussions where where this community garden, ideally put on the west side, but where we can do a community garden is something that I understand will be part of our bigger, what is that document, a planning document, a strategic plan?
In the strategic plan, yes.
And so I, I feel confident and, and I think what, having set aside some of that money, now I'm understanding that if it's not, uh, allocated by the end of this year, we, we won't be able to do so. Is that correct, Josh, that we have the deadline? So I'm hoping that my understanding from this action will probably get me down to maybe about forty thousand that'll be left in, in that particular, from the original ninety thousand I had set aside for the community gardens.
Just go ahead and request that allocated to the community garden as determined by Seth?
Well, I think, uh, we'll, we'll figure, we'll figure out how that'll work, but, uh, but this is a request for now, but I definitely will have till the summer thirty-first for the rest of the money.
Well, that's just a little bit of a, um, clarification. Um, so we, we are, staff is intending to come back to council in the near future. I'm not sure if Josh has selected that meeting yet, the second meeting in August. And our intention is to say to council, look, we, 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 we don't have to have the money just decided on where it's going to spend. It has to be under contract to be spent by December thirty-first. So I think the direction that Councilmember Sagala shared tonight in terms of the organization, that's very helpful for us. And we can start be evaluating on if, if that is all, you know, can be doable from a legal perspective. And it feels like it is, but I think we have to talk to our consultant, it, it sounds like it is, which is great. I think the challenge we have is, um, the longer we wait to make sure all of it is determined. For example, we have some projects that were staff recommendations that we've not spent all those funds, so we're going to bring that back to council. And I will tell you that our recommendation will be when we come back, that those money be used for the homeless shelter. And the reason for that is because we know we're coming back to you on September seventeenth with the bids so that you can make a decision. And we were very confident that if you decide to fund a homeless shelter and we know those excess funds from ARPA are going to go to the homeless shelter, we're good. We know it's going to be taken care of and we've met the December thirty-first deadline. So we just want to give council caution that if we, if we choose not to use the dollars for the homeless shelter and there's other purposes, we got to get it under contract by December, not the decision of what we're going to do with it.
So that, that would be the request that those three specific items be agendized for the next meeting.
There any questions?
While that's on the agenda, does anybody else, is there any other money we want to deal with? Cause we have to get our contract.
We, we will be bringing that back on the second meeting in August. The balances, yes. Uh, we'll highlight all the balances and those.
His and the others too?
Yes, and, and the staff, extra dollars from ARPA, yes.
I think, I know, I know we've seen it before, but it'd be a refresher to get it.
Yes, those balances are constantly changing. Projects have changed over time since your council has allocated monies. Some have come in a little bit higher, some have come in a little bit lower. There's definitely a true up that needs to occur and, uh, Mark has already described kind of what we're thinking about in terms of how any excess dollars would be allocated because we have that large contract for the shelter that's coming up and those monies would qualify for use for.
And Josh, if you could, once you have that balance, those balances worked out, if you can give it to me in advance, I'll include it in the weekly report, so you have more time to contemplate.
Yes.
All right, so at this point, um, Councilman Sagala is asking us if we will approve his three action items to be on the agenda for next, our next council meeting.
Make the motion to move to have it.
We just need a consent.
So moved.
Just a consensus. Okay, so everyone have a
Yes.
Good with that? Okay, there you go. All right, so, uh, staff updates, we'll start with Jason.
Before you start with Jason, I want to extend, uh, as on myself, and I'm sure others would join, uh, hoping you great success in your, your impending move. And, uh, you've done a great job as far as I'm concerned. And when, and I, I've been on council since you came, I've seen what you've done. I've been impressed, uh, your son's a hell of a basketball player, by the way, and, uh, you had history in that regard also, and you're taking all that over to Visalia, which, uh, I understand why. Um, but we're, we'll miss you and you, in my opinion, you've left your department in excellent shape and the city appreciates what you've done, so congratulations.
Thank you very much. Um, I, I'm still around for a while. I'll be at a, another council meeting, um, but I appreciate that, thank you. I, I have no updates tonight.
Tricia?
Nothing to report.
Michael?
Nothing to report.
Mark?
Nothing to report.
Josh?
So I plan on coming to council with an ARPA item in the second meeting in August, so that was my report, thank you.
Thank you. Tracy?
Uh, nothing tonight, Mayor.
Mario?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Chief Otte?
Nothing you don't already know, thank you.
Chief Inklan?
Nothing to report.
Mario?
I've said too much.
I know, but I was going to ask you. Mark?
Uh, just really quick, um, council, I think you're aware of this, I know the executive team is. Um, I've been contemplating a reorganization of our departments and some of our functions. Um, not major changes, uh, mostly change of assignments in terms of who's overseeing what. Uh, but there are some mi- minor, maybe, maybe more than minor duty changes in terms of certain functions going to certain places. Um, I'm going to share more of that with you in the weekly report this week and then more of that'll be daylighted as we go forward. I'm thinking of moving forward more quickly than originally anticipated. And so I just wanted you to be aware that that'll be coming on Friday and certainly want to give you enough time to consume that information and ask me any questions or speak to others as you need to. Uh, but we will probably, don't take too long, because we probably will move pretty quick. Thank you.
Thank you.
One last thing, Mayor, uh, well, when I say it, you won't give me that look. A, a member of our Board of Public Utilities, Renee Soto's, uh, husband Dennis passed away. And it would be my request that when we, we adjourn, we adjourn in his memory and have a moment of silence.
Absolutely.
I just want to say what you got, Mr. We, some council members have got a text, our Tulare traveling baseball team, little.
Yeah, I just got that.
Uh, our two and O in the, in the tournament doing well. So we got a Tulare representation out there.
Where it works out there.
Um, give me a second, Dennis. Look, say it again.
Roner Park.
Rona.
I think that's how you say it.
Roanoke Park?
Roanert.
Roanert, yeah.
Yeah.
Park, um, is where they're at. And then also, um, I just wanted to share is that, uh, uh, Kionto Vernon is hosting a basketball camp in Tulare on, uh, July twenty-seventh. So a member, a prominent stand-up Tulare Union Basketball that's coming back and hosting a basketball camp again in Tulare and helping them to make that happen, but, uh, sorry, I just, I missed that part in our earlier announcements, but uh, uh, good, good youth stuff taking place.
Yeah, lots of good things happening. All right, with that said, we will adjourn the meeting, uh, with a minute of silence. Well, we'll do that first and then adjourn, okay? Meeting adjourned.